Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular City Council meeting of the DeKalb City Council, August 26, 2019. Prior to our call to order tonight and our roll call, I would like to remind anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak to any item on our agenda, or for that matter, any item not on our agenda, to simply fill out a speaker request form, get that to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, she will get it to me, and we will get you on in the order of the agenda. Thank you. And I'll try to do my best. We have quite a few who would like to speak tonight. Having said that, I would like to call this meeting to order officially, and Lynn Fazekas, if you would please call the roll.
Morris.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Jeff, if you put the picture up on the screen, please, we would move forward with the National Anthem. This young lady, Grace Verbic, is the daughter of our Sixth Ward Alderman, Mike Verbic, and she had a very, very special task, or an honor, if you will, about a month ago at a Chicago baseball game, and with her permission, we've asked her to allow us to play the video of that. Before we do hear Grace's version of the National Anthem, the Star Spangled Banner, I'd be remiss if I didn't allow our Sixth Ward Alderman, Mike Verbic, to make a few introductory comments.
It's pretty neat how life's connections can come up with these special opportunities, and it was just a conversation at work I was having with a colleague, and that colleague said he was very interested in Grace's major and voice in opera in college, and he also happens to work for the White Sox part-time, and said, "We're looking for those to sing the Star Spangled Banner," and all your daughter would have to do is submit a recording of an audition of the Star Spangled Banner. She did, and within a matter of days, they contacted her and said, "We'd like you to perform," and wow, she was just blown away and very, very nervous going into this opportunity, but certainly, once she got into it, everything went well. The Chicago White Sox, our top-class organization, made her feel very comfortable. Staff were outstanding, and we had a great time.
Thank you, Mike. And now, if you join me, if you're able to stand and celebrate with us as Grace Verbic, a DeKalb girl sings the National Anthem, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to note, too, that for those of you who may have been at the Community Pride Benefit Concert last Wednesday at Hopkins Park, I commend Mike Embry for putting that together. It raised some money to benefit the fire victims in DeKalb and in Sycamore, and Grace came out from Chicago and sang that, and it was just very, very good. So, Mike, I know you're real proud of her, and we thank Grace for allowing us to play that tonight. Okay, if you do have a copy of the agenda, we will follow this through as closely as we can. We are now at the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
I move to...
Alderman Morris.
Thank you. I move to adjust the agenda to consider item K to be a first reading rather than a second reading.
Ordinance number one?
Correct.
Okay. Ordinance, second reading, one. And you would like, your motion is to make that as a first reading?
Correct.
Okay. There's been a motion made?
Second.
And there is a second to that. Any discussion? Alderman Fanouken.
Just if we could get some clarification from our city attorney, if that is theoretically possible or not.
Thank you, Alderman. It is on for a second reading. It did have a first reading. There are amendments to it, and that is not unusual. The purpose of a second reading really is twofold. It allows the board and the council to chew on this a bit and to see what changes, if any, they would like to make. And number two, it does give people who may have been absent from the first reading the opportunity to have some public input into the ordinance. So, it is on second reading, and it's normally a matter of parliamentary procedure where you could do it, and it certainly can be amended on second reading and passed in its amended form.
What's being asked here, John, is that we would basically start all over, right, with first reading. Is that something that, at this point, that parliamentary procedure tells us what we could do?
Well, yeah, normally, it's already had a first reading, so it's on second reading.
I suppose I beg to differ, that I don't believe this has had a first reading because it is substantially different from the item we considered when we considered it a first reading. The first time we read it, we were considering whether or not to change the clerk's position from an appointed to an elected position. This time, we're no longer making that consideration, but we are now assessing what duties should comprise the role. And so, I would suggest that this is no longer the same ordinance, no longer the same item, anyway.
It is fairly routine to have changes on a second reading. The Illinois State Legislature does a three-reading process, and it's not uncommon for them to start all over in the middle of the whole process, to gut everything, to start fresh. So, the fact it's been changed, really, from a parliamentary procedure matter, is not really a concern as far as whether it should be considered first reading or second reading.
So, what Alderman Morris is seeking is absolutely within our legal boundaries to do tonight.
Well, parliamentary, the proper procedure would be to leave it at a second reading.
A second reading? Would that be okay, Carolyn? We're going to talk about any changes or anything in second reading?
I just think I'm a little bit concerned because this is so substantially different, and I believe, you know, we first heard about this on Thursday, and so, I think it would allow the community more time to assess their perspective on this and allow the Alderman more time.
Oh, so what you're looking for is more time in this? Because unless we were to waive second reading on that, we would start over, I guess.
I think this just needs a thorough review, and I think there's potential that we could pass it as is today, and that's, you know, without having given it more than two business days.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, three business days assessment.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we change ordinance 2019-054, amending Chapter III, City Administration, Section 3.14, City Clerk, from second reading to first reading. And it's been seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Fagan.
No.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
No.
Three I, four N.
So, that motion is defeated to change the ordinance from second reading to first reading.
I'm making the motion, the agenda be approved as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we approve the agenda as printed. Discussion. Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
No.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I, one N.
Thank you. We now move along to public participation, and this is the opportunity for anyone who would like to speak to any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, to please come forward. We do have a very hefty group of folks who would like to speak, so we would like you to try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Also, I know we have some folks in the audience, including our esteemed former city clerk, Peggy Hoyt, who is in a wheelchair and is not able to get to the podium, so I've asked our assistant city manager, Ray Munch, when your name comes up, Ray will bring the wireless mic over, and Peggy and any others who may be in need of that special assistance, we'll make sure we get a mic to you, as opposed to you having to go over there. Okay, let's move right along, then, to item E under Presentations.
Jerry, is nobody speaking at this time in public?
Oh, yes, I beg your pardon. Is there anyone at this point who would like to speak under public participation? You have the choice of speaking now or speaking at the time when the ordinance or the item on the agenda is brought up. Anybody would like to speak now? Yes, sir. And do I have your speaker request form?
No, you do not.
Okay.
Do I need it for this?
Please.
Speaker request form?
Yes. You can speak now, or you can speak at the time the...
If I can speak now, I'd like to speak now.
Okay.
Sir, if you'd go to the podium, though, so that it can be recorded. Thank you.
And please, give us your name, please.
My name is George Christensen.
Thank you.
And I would just like to speak on the topic of appointing the city clerk. I'm a little confused as to what appointing the city clerk brings to the citizens of DeKalb. I don't see any benefit to taking the right to electing a city clerk from our citizens. And as I understand it, this has been brought up several times and defeated several times, and I am really curious as to why we seem to think we have the time to waste on this again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And I think that item will be brought up tonight also again. All righty. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am? If you've got a speaker request form, good. If you would simply give that to me, if that's okay, Lynn? Michelle Foster.
I would also like to speak on the matter of the clerk. I feel that if the referendum has passed several times, that it should be an elected position. I don't understand why it's needed at this time. The clerk is a check and a balance, and there's no reason why, if the citizens have said they want it to be elected, that it should be changed at this point in time. I live in Tracy Smith's ward, sir. As my representative, please listen to people. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, anyone else at this point? David DK, and you do have, have you got a speaker request form up here, David? Okay, I'll find it. The mic is yours.
Well, thank you. I didn't get you anything. I'm just really concerned about, well, Carolyn's amendment. I'm not sure how you can do a second reading on an entirely new document. It's so different. I mean, you passed first reading for Document A, now you have Document B, and you're going ahead as if it were still the same document. It's totally changed. I'm just really confused how that could be legal. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, anybody else at this time? Okay, well, then, let's move along. Again, those of you who have filled out a speaker request form, I'm going to assume now that you'd like to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. Okay, we're at Presentations. Proclamation, landlord, tenant, and property owners housing. I have a proclamation in front of me. I would like to read it in its entirety at the request of our Human Relations Commission. For the benefit of those of you who have been following city government, you know that we have 14 boards and commissions. Many commissions, like the Human Relations Commission, make recommendations to council, and we will move forward with their suggestions and take those suggestions seriously. So, this landlord, tenant, and property owners housing proclamation was passed by the Human Relations Commission, and I've been asked to read that, so if you would please allow me just a couple of minutes. Whereas the City of DeKalb and Northern Illinois University have a long history of cooperation, and whereas the city and NIU have joint responsibility for the safety and well-being of its student residents, and whereas the on-campus residential safety and living conditions of its students has been closely monitored by the university, and whereas the safety and living conditions for students and residents who live in off-campus housing continue to be a concern for the city and NIU, and whereas most landlords and property owners of off-campus housing who call DeKalb County home maintain safe and clean environments, and whereas a few landlords and absentee property owners have not maintained safe and clean residential properties, and whereas the city inspections have identified code violations and assessed fines after countless contacts to landlords and property owners, and whereas some landlords and property owners have resisted maintaining their properties even after these reminders of violations, including trash in the hallways and outside of the buildings, emergency cameras broken, outside doors broken and not secure, mold in apartments, carpets not cleaned, nor walls painted before new tenant occupancy, and various plumbing and electrical problems not fixed, and whereas in some properties, tenants are engaging in vandalism and contributing to the building trash, and whereas some property tenants have begun to form tenants associations, like the DeKalb Tenants Association, to help improve the living conditions of tenants, then it be proclaimed that the City of DeKalb will continue to provide law enforcement and legal actions, if necessary, to ensure safe and habitable housing, and calls on landlords and property owners to renew their efforts this summer to bring their properties up to code for safety and cleanliness standards, and that residents of these properties assist in maintaining their residences for the benefits of all tenants, be it as individuals and/or as part of a tenants association. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of DeKalb to be affixed this 26th day of August, 2019. Signed, Jerry Smith, Mayor. I'd like to present this proclamation to our Human Relations Commission Chair, Larry Afferson, who would then like to make some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. The Human Relations Commission is appreciative of your reading this proclamation. The Human Relations Commission has become aware, as many of you have, through the media or through comments you've heard in public, that some of our rental properties have not been maintaining the health or safety standards that are really necessary, and I think reflect what we are all about here in the City of DeKalb, which is to provide safety and well-being for all residents, even those that rent. The HRC has been working to learn more. We became aware that, obviously, we've got landlords and property owners that are doing a great job. Unfortunately, we discovered we have a few that are not doing such a great job. We also discovered in our listening to people that some of our property owners legitimately have problems with their tenants, who are not helping with cleanliness nor keeping up their own apartment, let alone the building. So, we concluded, and the reason with the proclamation calling for a joint effort is I think it's about time that all those major players take a step up and start getting the complexes that are not up to standards into a livable condition that is safe and sanitary. The fact that we have documentation on mold in our apartments, black mold, that doesn't get attended to, we have door and security systems that get broken and not fixed, we have trash in hallways, we have it around the building, is, in this day and age, and with a university community, and now I'm speaking just of student tenants, when you have a university, like many of our public state universities, struggling to maintain enrollments, partly because that age group is declined in the demographics, we can't afford to have substandard housing for the rental community. We all have to do what we can to bring up the standards and make sure the word of mouth, in this case, of student tenants to their friends back home, will say something to the effect, "Yeah, I've had a pretty good experience. In fact, you know, I'm going to be graduating. You might want to see if you can rent my apartment." I don't think we're getting that word of mouth currently for several of our complexes. In fact, if you go out on social media, you will see that it's quite the contrary. So, I just want to reflect, again, that I think this is doable. I don't understand why a community is ours that has young individuals that are going to be getting apartments, knows of families that are also renting, and has children that are in some pretty poor sanitary conditions in their apartments. I don't understand why that goes along. I really don't. I think everyone, council, the Human Relations Commission, people in this audience, people who are residents in our community, I don't think we should take that any longer. I think we have a moral duty to get anyone you know that is associated with any property that is treating rental individuals the way you're going to hear some of them have been treated. Absolutely unacceptable. Leave this community, then, if you cannot maintain a proper facility. And with that in mind, I'd like to introduce one of the chief organizers of the DeKalb Tenant Association, Jacob Moss. Jacob has been working very hard, and if any of you have ever done community organization work, you know what this is like, to try to be a positive part of this solution. Jacob, if you would, please come and tell us a little bit about the association and what your goals are.
And Jacob, before you start, try to keep it to three minutes, because I know you have a number of your associates who would like to speak, and, again, just a reminder, we have a lot of folks to speak on items tonight, so try to keep it to three. Thank you.
I'll keep it quick. I just want to thank Larry for his words and for his support in helping to voice tenant needs in this community. It is important to talk about the cleanliness, the black mold that is pervasive, the maintenance requests that go unfulfilled, but it's not just that. The reason why we have this problem is because tenants in this community, they don't know their rights, and they don't have effective enforcement mechanisms to hold landlords' abuse accountable. Tenants often don't receive the receipt that is required by law for them to get their security deposit back. Tenants in this town are subject to evictions that are legal. Above the needs of cleanliness and habitability of these places, people are being predated upon, and they're being charged things that, they don't really have any way to, I mean, people can go to small claims court, but most people aren't trained and like how to do that. So, we need better tenant education in this community, and we need better enforcement mechanisms that tenants who are facing abuse can use to try to hold those people that are inflicting that upon them accountable. So, tonight, we're going to hear from some people in this community who have been victims of fires, people who don't have their maintenance requests met, and all sorts of stuff that people need to understand is happening in this community. It affects students who go to school, it affects families who work here, and our community should not tolerate this.
Thank you, Jacob, and thanks for your leadership. I do have a number of those speaker request forms. These were given to Lynn Fazekas in this order, so I'd like to call these folks up. John Higgins.
I'm going to be, like, I'm not available.
Okay. Ray, this gentleman, Mr. Higgins, is going to need a wireless mic. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. I am a victim with Hunter DeKalb Properties. I have legitimately dealt with housing. Housing has taken them off of Section 8 Housing altogether because of what they've done to me, but now they're changing their names to Hunter Star, and it's basically the same people. Now, I was a victim of not painted walls. I didn't have heat. I didn't have any proper maintenance done to my apartment, and it got so bad that when they did, they wanted me to sign a lease two months early, which I did, but then it failed six inspections, three state inspections, three city inspections.
people need to understand is happening in this community. It affects students who go to school, it affects families who work here, and our community should not tolerate this.
Thank you, Jacob, and thanks for your leadership. I do have a number of those speaker request forms. These were given to Lynn Fizikas in this order, so I'd like to call these folks up. John Higgins. Okay. Ray, this gentleman, Mr. Higgins, is going to need a wireless mic. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. I am a victim with Hunter DeKalb Properties. I have legitimately dealt with housing. Housing has taken them off of Section 8 housing altogether because of what they've done to me, but now they're changing their names to Hunter Star, and it's basically the same people. Now, I was a victim of not painted walls. I didn't have heat. I didn't have any proper maintenance done to my apartment, and it got so bad that when they did, they wanted me to sign a lease two months early, which I did, but then it failed six inspections, three state inspections, three city inspections, at which time I invoked my right of my lease of Article 15, and I moved out. I am in the middle of a small claims court case that hopefully it will end on Wednesday, but anybody that wants to know how to get through their loopholes, I will be more than happy to tell you, because I have done it. And this needs to stop. I mean, I lost everything I owned, and I'm talking about stuff that cannot be replaced. And I'm sorry I'm taking over three minutes, but I had a 30-year collection of pewter wizards that my mom gave me that they stole, and along everything else. I'm done, because I just want everybody to know that I appreciate you guys calling this meeting, because it really needs to be addressed. It's not being addressed. I mean, six inspections failed, and they still wouldn't fix nothing. I don't know, I don't understand it. And what made it worse was my rent was paid up until April 1st. I went to get the rest of my stuff, and it was gone, and everything was strewn all over the place, and it was not called for. It really has put a stress on my life. And me going to court for eight months, I have lost over 50 pounds because of the stress, and I'm afraid that I'm at a health risk, but thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next individual is Roxanne Jenkins. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. This is the worst thing I can do, is possibly sit in here and talk in front of everybody. I absolutely hate this. I do not like talking, but I just want to say that I lived there for three years, and the three years that I've lived there, it was absolutely a nightmare. I lived on 902 Ridge, so I wasn't affected by the fires, but I was affected by mold. I was affected by things not getting fixed as needed, and we had supposed to, we had a fob for the door to get in, but they broke the door and they broke the lock. So once that happened, it was never replaced, so then we would have homeless people come in, and they would be upstairs sleeping, and then hanging out, drinking, and using the bathroom on the floor. And when we told the office about it, they were just like, "Well, I mean, there's nothing we can do, because we can't keep the people out." Well, that's funny, because I moved to Sycamore, I finally got out of the hellhole, and went to a different place, and we don't have locks on the outside locks, but we don't have people in the hallway, not to mention the fact, yeah, we said they were smoking weed in the building too, yeah. So we would walk through, and there'd be like people just hanging out. Where are these people coming, these thugs? I don't even know if they live around there. But yeah, it was just a nightmare. And then in the wintertime, we have to pay $40 at the time for our parking pass, and then they never even took care of the parking. I fell down several times, because they just wouldn't do what we're entitled to. What is so complicated about having a nice environment with the basic things that we need? It's supposed to be land of the free, and where is that? It's certainly not with anything to do with Hunter, but thank you guys for listening, because now I feel like I have support behind me. Thank you so much.
You've done a nice job. Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Capricia Williams. And we're going to need a mic there for Capricia.
Hi, my name is Capricia Williams. Some of you may have read that article, but all of it's true. Hunting properties is terrible, and I've been there probably four years now, and I have failed every inspection, and it's to the point where now they don't even lease with them. I'm currently in the middle of just basically working with family members and trying to find another place to be, because I don't need to be in a situation where I'm dealing with my, I have a condition, a chronic condition that, like, once you're sick, other things happen, you know? And it's like, when you're paying for something, you expect better conditions, and honestly, there is, I can remember there was some, sometimes where I had better conditions in the city than where I live now. And I'm like, if I wanted this, then, you know, that's why I still be, I'm here, I'm a college student, a broke college student at that, so this is like the last thing I need, and everybody knows that I'm pretty much an advocate for any kind of injustice, and I should be able to, you know, inhabit, you know, space where I can be comfortable and not be sick, because, you know, for me, it's chronic, and it's all the time, so I mean, I'm doing what I can to maintain it, but, you know, having mold and having, you know, things not painted and constant flooding, that's not, you know, inhabitable, but thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, our next speaker is Ryan Ziegelbauer. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
You did.
Good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I have been living in DeKalb for several years now, most recently at 305 North First Street, just across the way, and back in January of 2018, we had noticed that black mold had been creeping up. They had painted over it when we moved in. The windows are very, very drafty. They were constantly covered in condensation, regardless of the heating, because they were so thin, and all of that condensation would pour on the windowsill, leading to, of course, black mold. Reported in January of 2018, and for a year and a half, we endured this, constantly contacting our landlords to get anything done, and they would simply ignore us, giving us platitudes, or "I'm sorry, we'll get around to it," but nothing would ever happen. Eventually, we followed the market, we move out of that apartment. The new apartment I've moved into had immediate issues with roof flooding, and just this morning, I was woken up by a deluge coming down from my ceiling as the pipes had given way. My mattress has been soaked through, the mattress protector, the blankets, the pillows, the box spring itself, all soaked through, and I had to replace it of my own money. Tenants in this town need some easy recourse for these injustices, as they are rightly called, and as municipal body, you are perfectly situated to do that. The Better Business Bureau, going to small claims court, all of these are huge hassles that are very difficult for tenants, especially students, to deal with, and it's very important that you help these residents and these students to deal with these problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is, and I think I've got this correctly, is it Debbie Bogaki? Debbie?
Hi, my name is Dave Bogaki. I used to live at 808 Ridge. I was there for five years. I was there and rented from Pitzley when they first ran it. They were amazing, they were awesome. The cameras worked, the doors were locked, appropriate people rented the apartment. And then once Hunter took over, their office was there for maybe about two, three months, they moved their apartment to Lincoln Towers. That's when everything went to shit. Cameras didn't work, doors didn't lock, people getting high in the hallways, the stairwells, nobody respected anybody. Well, since the fires, they condemned my building. It took me a month to get my stuff out of the condemned building, because they would not let me know the times and days to go in and get my stuff. Well, they put me on Russell Road. Granted, the apartment's okay. I was there a couple weeks. Well, they told me, they weren't specific on the door number that I was going to move into on Russell, 830 Russell. She said, "Look for the door that looks like it's been kicked in. That's your new apartment." Oh, okay. So I go on there, there's still garbage in the apartment, everywhere. They told me it was garbage. A couple days later, the college student came back to get his stuff. That was his stuff, but I was told it was garbage. His name was still on the lease. He was still leasing that apartment when they put me in that apartment. What can I say? The water heater exploded, hot water everywhere. I had to call the fire department, because I didn't know who else to call to. I couldn't call Hunter, because they would show up seven days later to fix the problem. So I called the fire department. Thank God they were there within an hour to fix the problem. What can you do? I'm still leasing from Hunter, because where can I go? I've tried. I don't have money to pay for, and, what do you call it? You know, you fill out the paperwork.
Oh, application.
Application. I don't have money for an application. I went to the cheapest place, they want $100 for me and my husband to fill out an application. Who has that? I don't even have 40. I have money to move, but where am I going to go? So therefore, I'm stuck with Hunter for another year. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Tamara Person Hescott.
Short me here. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm thrilled to have this opportunity to bring to you the face of homelessness, and I'm willing to admit that, I know there's a lot of people in the community who go, "Oh!" But you know what? This is the face of homelessness right now, and why? Because I have Section 8 housing, no more. I lived in 959 Forest Drive, who's gone through three different management companies. Townsend, I'm sorry, but they were the worst. A lot of things were never fixed. When I moved into that place, I had been at Hope Haven. I asked them if they would please fix these specific things, like carpeting with holes in it, you could smell cat urine, the microwave in the kitchen had half-mast with a glass, and they taped it and they glued it. That was their solution. There were holes in the ceilings, there were silverfish, there were, the doorbells didn't work, and there was just different things. And now I have children with autism and bipolar disorder, and I have a grandson now like that. They aren't with me, so housing asked me to move out of this three-bedroom apartment that I had maintained for five years. I was raised that you give something back better than what you received it in. I tried my best. I scrubbed, I scoured. I even had a friend who gave up of his time to help me get this done, and gave me a place to live. There were things like cockroaches. Suddenly, a year ago, I had to go into some major surgery, and the night of my birthday, I saw a cockroach, and I just totally lost it. I was up the entire night. I actually went to my surgery the next day, not sleeping, and partly because I was panicking and freaking out, looking for cockroaches in the entire area of my apartment. And I had just gotten done cleaning and getting it ready for after-surgery. This went on for almost a year, and then I had, at that time, the yamber taken over. I have picked up garbage in these properties with my children. I also, this passed exactly one year ago, we were cutting all the bushes and the shrubs, because it looked so bad. Yamber had asked me, or the maintenance person had asked me if I would do that, at least my son, and I tried to help with that, so I would sit on a bench, and I would cut and do what I could. I wasn't paid for it, wasn't nothing. I have verification, people can prove that I did do that work. What happened after that was then Pitzley took over, and by that time, he even, Mike had said I could stay. The problem was I had moved because of my housing and the amount of my voucher. All of my kids had moved out.
Tamara, you're right at three minutes. Would you try to wrap it up?
Yeah, I sure will. So there was more, there were several things that happened, and I was, they kept my $950 security deposit, and they charged me $985 for things that were in immaculate condition considering some of the vandalism, and we've had police in that neighborhood, and I know several of the officers here know what I'm talking about, because it's been pretty bad. So if we can get the community pulled together, and yes, some tenants are terrible, I've seen some of the conditions, and it's embarrassing, but, you know, I'm not one of those tenants that vandalizes and wrecks things. I want a home. If you wouldn't live in that place, why would you expect me to live there?
Thank you.
And that's really what it is.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. James Mason.
Wow. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? There is 12, 30 reasons for what's happening here tonight. It's 30 years of mismanagement from one end to the other. The university cuts its enrollment and staff by 50, 60 percent. You have a vacuum in the units, and the real estate taxes almost double. So the reason that a lot of the maintenance is not being taken care of is the landlords don't have the money to fix the roof. This is a big deal. I've said to the, I've said to the city manager, and the mayor, and other people, this is a health and safety issue, and the only way you're going to be able to get out of this is through the courts. And the poor people in this room can't afford a lawyer, so they're stepped on one way or the other. Now, as I was sitting there thinking about this, I helped with Bessie Knopfless and I, and a few other people, we put together the landlord-tenant law that is 90% today. Don Henderson was the first ombudsman, and he got sick of it, and they handed it off to me for a year. I took questions from landlords and tenants, and told them where to go, what to do, and I'm saying right now to any tenants out there, or landlords that don't know what to do, Wow. Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jim. I believe I have my paperwork straight, and only one other person wants to speak to this item, and that is Dave Rethke.
So I'm a landlord. I own one unit, and I pay my $50 a year to the city for enforcement. I had to go to the class, and I met a lot of the other small landlords in town. And the way it works is the city calls me up and says, "Hey, some kid wannabe just tagged your garage at your rental property, you need to get over and paint that." So the next day, I go over with a bucket of white paint, and I repaint the garage to cover that up. And then they call me, and they say, "You got weeds growing in the alley." And I go over and I check, and I call the city, and I say, "Well, actually, the tenant, the wildflowers that she put in there, I'd rather not tear them out." And they say, "Okay, no problem." But I have to follow the law as a landlord in this town. The largest, to give you perspective, the largest single rental owner in the country today is Blackstone Equity Group. You know, they weren't into real estate until the 2000 recession, and they swept in and grabbed all kinds of foreclosed properties, and turned around and became the big renter. We're kind of seeing that on a smaller scale here in town. We get groups like Hunter, which is a huge corporation, nursing homes, they operate several states, they're the, if you're looking for gentrifying properties in Chicago, that's where you go, right? And what Hunter's done here in our town is they've come here, and they've said to us, "We are above the law. We have more resources than you have, we have more money than you have." So it basically incur fines, pay legal fees, and it's just part of doing business, because it's cheaper than fixing the properties. And they've come to us in our town, and they've said to us, they've laid down the marker that you can't touch us. You don't believe it, check out the newspaper article. You don't believe it, check out the newspaper article recently they're suing the city. They've got hundreds of housing violations and they're coming back and saying defamation of character. It's a slap suit, right? Because they're thinking at this point, we don't have the resolve as a city to take them on. That the city of DeKalb will say, "We don't have the money to pay for additional legal resources to enforce our own laws." That the tenants won't get organized and say, "We're not going to pay the rent and build political power." The tenant association by law is the most positive thing happening here. Because when it comes time, at some point, I'm hoping the tenants don't pay their rent and that our sheriff sees the political power of organized people and says, "I'm not doing evictions." But it's going to take some time and we've got to all come together on this thing. No one group, the city council, the tenant association, the landlords, none of us can do it alone. We have to be together on this thing and taking on a hundred properties. Because they've laid down the mark and we've got to respond, not in our community.
And just one editorial comment, Mr. Rathke. I think tonight's meeting shows that progress that you asked for. You know, uh, the proclamation, the HRC getting together, the tenants being here tonight. And believe me, we as a city council and we as a city administration fully realize that it, we have a couple of bad apples perhaps. One has been outlined pretty specifically tonight. But we have a wealth of good landlords who keep their properties clean, who address the concerns of their tenants. And so no one, let me repeat, no one should get the idea that this city council or this Human Relations Commission is indicting our group of area rental agents, DARA and others. So Larry, I appreciate that. Jacob, I appreciate your time tonight. And, uh, we'll move on to one more presentation, if we may. And that is proudly DeKalb, introducing Judy Schneider, a DeKalb Treasury. A DeKalb Treasurer. Are you a DeKalb Treasury, Judy? A DeKalb Treasurer. I'd like to have Bill Nicholas say a few words and then I understand you have a presentation.
I'll just introduce Judy. Is this on? Yep. So Judy's been very quietly, uh, working with our city departments for a lot of years.
That's what makes me the treasurer, the lot of years.
Yeah, working with a lot of local agencies. And, uh, her passion is brightening the streetscapes around our community. She's, um, thanks in large part to her initiative, she's enlisted to help many partners, master gardeners of the U of I Cooperative Extension Service, the DeKalb High School FFA, Kishawaki College Horticulture Students, Jaeger's Farm, DeKalb Community Gardens and others. And for more than a dozen years, that involvement and with those agencies has, uh, led to a lot of scenes that people enjoy without really knowing the, the origin of them.
Thank you.
Well, here's a big part of that origin. I'm going to yield to Judy.
Well, thank you very much, Bill.
She's got a video for us tonight.
Yeah, good. And believe me, we notice. We notice when we drive around this community, especially Lincoln Highway, seeing the flowers and seeing the plants. Judy, we appreciate your work and I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Thank you very much.
And give us a little presentation of what you've done in 2019.
Thank you very much. I know you have some tough topics, so I'll try to keep this short. But, um, I, I want to thank you for allowing me to celebrate a lot of our volunteers who do help with this program and Bill mentioned a few of them. So the master gardeners have been helping for at least twenty years and they come down in the spring, uh, they help, uh, plant all of the flower pots. Uh, they've been just really beneficial. NIU Cares Day students and staff as well and the DeKalb High School Horticulture and FFA students. And you're going to see some glimpses of them as we go on. On the left there is some of the high school kids. They come down and I've kind of given them Van Bier Plaza and they've liked that they can take ownership of that. They come down on a very cold day in April. This day, actually, it, uh, they, they weren't able to stay because of the rain. But for a couple of hours, they were able to go in there and clean out all last year's growth. They come back a month later with plants that they have grown in their greenhouse. They donate them to the city and they plant about a half dozen of the big plantation planters as well as some different areas around Van Bier Plaza. I think that gives them pride too, when they come through town to see that they've done that work. Here is some NIU Cares Day students. Uh, NIU has been doing this for many years. We have teamed them up with our master gardeners, which is pretty neat. For the students, it might be the first time that they've ever done this kind of work. For the master gardeners, it's an opportunity for them to connect with twenty-somethings and it's really a fun day. Over a three-hour day, they clean up all of the flower beds in downtown DeKalb with the help of some city staff as well. And, uh, it, it's really helpful. Uh, this was our group this year. We had forty students from all walks of life. And if you look closely, I can't point it out, but President Freeman, this is her second year helping our group downtown with the cleanup and our street superintendent's Andy Rye there in the background. But really, just a lot of fun and many hands make light work. This would take us a lot of time to do this, so we really appreciate that. And we have some vendor partners, um, and, you know, we pay them for their work, but they give us discounted rates. On the right are some of the students, um, from the Walnut Grove Vocational Farm. They're students with disabilities who plant so many of the plants that we plant later in the planters. Kishawaki Community College students as well, plant our big, large plantation planters. Uh, we take them there in the fall, they bring them back in the spring and keep them growing until we can put them on the streets in May. And then Derby Line Greenhouse and Jaeger Farm markets, uh, do our hanging baskets and keep them in our greenhouses for a lot longer than they want to until we can get them out on the street. But we appreciate that. So this was plant day this year. We had probably twice that many show up and, uh, plant all of the different planters in, in downtown DeKalb. So beforehand, we kind of know what's going in the pots and they go out with their little spreadsheets that I've put together. And they're often not planted the way I have set them out to plant, but they are every bit as beautiful when they get finished with them. And one of the neat things that I wanted to share too is these are people from all walks of life. On the right is a former school superintendent. In the middle, the former executive director of the DeKalb County Nursing Home, three M executives, faculty from NIU and other places, just people from all around that come back and invest this time in our downtown. So it's, it's very much appreciated. And here at the Police Department, I thought I'd let you look at a few of the planters in case you haven't had a chance to go downtown. It'll go pretty quick and then hear from a few people. I did a little mini man on the street while I was down there in my father's footsteps. I didn't mention Lowe's and Walmart also donate things to us during the year.
We have our grounds and maintenance crews as well as our students. Our students are able to grow the plant material and then some of them get the opportunity to plant. You see the life cycle and it really is one of the best collaborations because when you go out and you're driving through DeKalb, you see these planters and you're just in amazement.
I think your flowers are beautiful. I live in Mendota and they don't take care of them. I see the ladies, the guys come by watering them and they're beautiful outside. People comment about them.
But that's one of those things that people, people don't notice until they're gone, I think. And, uh, I think they really make a move for downtown. They're well cared for, people who do take care of them.
Oops, that was it. Thank you very much.
Well, we're mad with joy, let me tell you. You know, if there's any other community out there in Illinois or the environs who are looking at what flowers can do to a community, they ought to come to DeKalb, they ought to walk around, they ought to talk to Judy Schneider. Thank you so much. You are a community treasurer. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we move to item G, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are enacted by one motion unless a council member would like one removed from the consent agenda. Does any council member have a desire to do that? Uh, okay, I'm going to read the consent agenda in its entirety. Number one, accounts payable and payroll through August 26, 2019 in the amount of two million, nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. Number two, investment and bank balance summary through June, 2019. Number three, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through June, 2019. Number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, July, 2019. And number five, Resolution 2019 dash one-two-three approving the award of a bid to Bourne Transit Consulting LLC for on-call transit consultant services. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. So moved. Second. It's been moved by Alderman Finuchen, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchen.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved as printed. We have no public hearings tonight, item eight, so we'll go to number I, considerations. Consideration of funding for the June 22, 2019 Balloons, Brews and Blues event in the amount of two thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. Uh, and I'd like to call on our city manager, Bill Nicholas, to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As I stayed in the background, back in late January, the council, uh, recommended, uh, a, actually approved a budget reduction in, uh, the area of, of community marketing and promotions. A total of thirty thousand dollars was reassigned to, uh, the reserve in effect, but, uh, there was a suggestion as a follow-on that perhaps, uh, up to ten thousand dollars might be set aside for some purpose as yet unknown that the council would, uh, be involved in the vetting of. And, uh, we have not had a, a, uh, application until now. And it comes to us from Mike Embry of the Fund Companies. As you know, uh, he was involved in, uh, organizing and producing the, the first Balloons, Brews and Blues event at the DeKalb Airport on June 22nd. That, uh, event attracted about fifteen hundred visitors. It was held on runway nine-twenty-seven, which is our north, or our east-west runway and it's connecting taxiways. High winds that day prevented the launch of the balloons, although the balloon, uh, owners were there. Uh, but the event nevertheless featured a number of bands. It was very well received. Uh, Mr. Embry has asked for some help to, to cover the cost of the expense of this particular promotion. Uh, the details are in your background. Uh, we recommend your approval of a grant of two thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars.
Since we approved the ten thousand dollars initially, do you simply need consensus or would you like a motion to approve this?
I think a motion.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve this request of twenty-six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. So moved. Second. It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you. And Mike Embry, I see you're in the back there in the red. Did you stand up purposefully so we could see you back there or not?
Gentlemen, I need a place to sit.
Thank, thank, thank you very much for what you continue to do in terms of entertainment, et cetera. Uh, Balloons, Brews and Blues were only one of those, uh, components. So thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we move along to item J, Resolutions. The following resolutions can be passed via omnibus vote if the council members agree to it. You've had a chance to take a look at these. Is there agreement that we can take these in omnibus form? Okay, let me read those and then we'll have a motion. Number one, Resolution 2019 dash one-two-four authorizing a two thousand, excuse me, 2019 sub-recipient agreement with the Children's Learning Center for the Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for funding the transportation program. Number two, Resolution 2019 dash one-two-five authorizing a 2019 sub-recipient agreement with elder care services for community development block grant funds in the amount of eight thousand dollars for funding the Choices for Care Program. Number three, Resolution 2019 dash one-two-six authorizing a 2019 sub-recipient agreement with Hope Haven for community development block grant funds in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars for funding the Emergency Shelter Program. Number four, Resolution 2019 dash one-two-seven authorizing a 2019 sub-recipient agreement with Safe Passage for Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for funding for emergency shelter and services programs. And number five, Resolution 2019 dash one-two-eight authorizing a 2019 sub-recipient agreement with the Voluntary Action Center for Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of thirteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars for funding for the Summer Meals Program at University Village. I'd entertain a motion to approve these resolutions, uh, as they were read in omnibus form.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Uh, before we ask city manager Nicholas to speak to this item, I'd like to indicate that both Alderman Smith and Alderman, uh, Fagan have recused themselves because they have an interest, uh, in representing, uh, one or more of the agencies that were represented. City manager Nicholas.
I just want to add, Mayor, that, uh, Joanne Rouse is our point of contact with these agencies, uh, as she has been for a number of years. She is a coordinator of our CDBG program and I'm grateful to her for the careful vetting that she's done in preparation of these documents for you tonight.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchen.
Yes.
Smith. Fagan. Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six eye.
Thank you. Number six, Resolution 2019 dash one-two-nine authorizing an agreement with DeKalb County as it pertains to the jurisdictional transfer of portions of Rich Road and Coltonville Road from DeKalb County to the city of DeKalb as identified by the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, Form BLR zero-five-two-one-two. Entertain a motion, please. So moved. Seconded. It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, please.
Hopefully, it takes me less time to explain this than it did to have to read the title. Uh, this is clearly a cleanup item as, as mentioned in the background. When we annex, uh, we annexed to the far side of the road. There was a portion of, uh, Rich Road and Coltonville Road, uh, in which the jurisdictional transfer was not followed up. Uh, that is, in this case, the county transferred to the city for our jurisdiction. And so we're asking you to, uh, proceed with this agreement, which will clean that up.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That motion passes that resolution. Thank you. Number seven, Resolution 2019-130, authorizing a tax increment financing grant in the amount of $12,200 to the Hillside Restaurant located at 121 North Second Street for the replacement of a building sewer. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The co-owner Gavin Wilson of the Hillside Restaurant is in the audience tonight and may have something to add or may not. I'll just summarize the purpose of this grant. As I indicate in the background, the Hillside Restaurant's been in a unique situation since the Egyptian project began. They have been at ground zero, literally. About a month ago, their sewer lateral, which is the building sewer from the building to the main on Second Street, was torn up accidentally. The subcontractor that was involved has made amends, repaired the sewer lateral, and that might have been the end of it, except the sanitary district is going, the Kewahki Wire Reclamation District is going to be extending a main from Second Street to the western side of the new addition for the Egyptian, and that is to be the intended new main to which the Hillside Restaurant is to connect. The location of that, the elevation of that, is going to, is going to create a further hardship that was not anticipated, because now this will be the option of choice. I thought under the circumstances that, and considering that the city is very much involved, as you know, in the Egyptian addition, that we might be able to extend some assistance to them as they do this. It's going to require work in their basement to realign the sewer pipe coming out of the wall of their, of their building into this new location in the Palmer Court area, so that is the recommendation tonight to you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Thank you. Number eight, Resolution 2019-131, authorizing the sale of real property located at 850 North First Street. That's pin 08-14-329-021, in the amount of $800. Motion, please.
To make a motion.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Faver. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last council meeting on August 12th, the council authorized city manager to list a number of city-owned parcels. That was Resolution 2019-122. Per your direction, I've since entered into a listing agreement, which requires that any of our properties be listed through the MLS service, and also provides certain expectations with respect to those listing agreements. We listed this particular property on August 15th. On August 16th, an offer in the amount of $800 was made. We didn't expect any offers. This particular land is mostly in a floodway, and the rest is in a floodplain. You think, right, why on earth would anybody do that? Well, the adjacent parcel owner can officially use this land as part of their side yard requirement, and so it has some value. A check for $500 in earnest money was already submitted, and we don't feel that there will be other offers for this parcel, so we recommend the sale at the offered price of $800.
Any further discussion?
Agree.
Alderman Fagan.
You know, sure, $800 doesn't seem much, but you've got to remember that, you know, we brought this up a year ago during budget. You know, it gets it, gets it back on the tax roll. We don't want to pay anybody to mow it, and this is what we've been looking forward to. Thank you.
Roll call.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That matter passes. Thank you. Okay, we move now to ordinances. Ordinance is second reading. This is item K on your agenda. I would entertain a motion initially, a second, and we do have a number of folks who would like to speak to this item.
Make a motion.
Okay, the move by Alderman Fagan. Seconded by Alderman Faver. Now, before I turn it over to city manager Nicholas for any comments he might make, I'd like to see if we can have some discussion. We have quite a few folks to speak to this item. And it just grew by two. The first one, and I think these were in the order that they were presented to city clerk Fizikas, Matthew Kepisthenik. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Surprisingly well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and try to keep things, again, everybody to three minutes or less.
I'll give you a minute and a half.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to start by addressing everyone here this evening, and just say that taking a personal issue and turning it into written policy is the wrong way to govern, and that appears to be what's going on with this topic. Now, I'd like to specifically address the following comments to my alderman. On this very controversial issue, you spoke for a minute and 35 seconds. During that time, you listened to everybody that talked on the issue, and you said you respected what everyone had to say. Yet, without a single person in the affirmative of the, of that law passing, you voted in favor of it. You said that having an elected position, whether it's full-time or part-time, didn't work, and you felt that appointed is the way to go. So can I assume that with the way the ordinance has been rewritten, you will not be voting in favor of it this evening? I ask for you to vote for the wishes of the residents and not for the administration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Peggy, you'll be on deck here, and we'll make sure that we get the mic to you. Craig?
Good evening. Craig Roman, District 7. I have a question about the agenda, because when it was released Thursday, subsection C was a lot more in-depth than the one sentence. So this goes back to Alderman Morris's contention that this should be on first reading, because the information you guys handed out on Thursday, I don't know when this updated information was given to the residents, which I don't believe met the three-day rule. So if you can let me know when this was changed.
Not sure I, so you're saying that what was posted on Thursday.
Thursday does not match the agenda for this evening.
It does. Sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Faver.
I believe you're looking at the published, but there's a link to where I think the full section C is listed.
Because I have the duties of the executive assistant under C, and then I have both the city clerk and a deputy clerk will each have a city seal as C. They do not match.
You have to click on the blue link in the attached agenda that's on the city's website.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, either way with that, I would still have to disagree with Dr. Nicholas that you have the right to appoint a clerk or an assistant clerk for the city clerk. The city clerk should be operating independently of itself, independently of the city manager, and independently of the city council. I do not believe that you shall have the right to appoint anyone to work in that office. If there is an issue inside the city clerk's office, we, as the residents, would have the right to remove the clerk and the assistant. If you appoint an assistant, we have no mechanism to remove that person.
I don't get to appoint the deputy. I do get to designate, and that's because, if I may, Mayor, and I'm sorry to.
Are you finished, Mr. Roman?
Point, counterpoint, but you've asked a good question, and it's only fair that people here. So we have a council manager, former government, which means the council, the policymakers, and the manager, and management, and the administration carry out the policies. And in that process, the city manager is responsible and accountable for seeing to it that the work is done. So the people that the manager hires and fires are a variety of people, public works employees, managers, administrative assistants, and the like. And in that context, it is rational to have the manager involved in basically proposing or designating those people who otherwise have full-time jobs, and as you know, the deputy clerk is a person who's already doing a full-time job or a part-time job, but fully involved in whatever the job is, to have some time to spare in the event that the clerk needs some help. That's what the deputy clerk is to do. Their title is something else, but they're also designated and then eventually appointed by the clerk. So it makes sense in that system, the council manager, former government, that the manager has a chance to at least say, these are the people who have the time and the expertise to lend some of that to the clerk as needed. That's what the system is. That's not what's being changed here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is a special friend, a special woman in this community, Peggy Hoyt, who was a former city clerk. And Peggy, it's great to see you. Always is. I'm going to have Ray Munch give you a mic, and you'd like to speak to this item, please. This is Peggy Marguerite Hoyt.
I spent some time writing the history of the city clerk, because the city clerk, when I ran for office in 1977, was a very obscure individual. I was ready for the office, and I didn't know what the job was going to entail, but I was a worker, and I knew that when I got there, I'd give it my all. And I did, because the people of DeKalb elected me five times, including when my own deputy ran against me. So I think I have an enviable record, and I have a place in my heart for the city clerk, because the city clerk, when I ran for office, was authorized by the state statutes and elected by the people for the people, not to answer to the mayor, the council, or the city manager. And I ran my office for 20 years, and I think I managed it with great dedication, and I was the best job I ever had. But now, after Donna and I both served about 30 years as clerk, the stuff hit the fan, and everything went haywire. So I'm wondering if it's possible we can turn back the clock in a manner of speaking and start again with the city clerk elected by the people for the people, and the city clerk appointing her deputy who has her back, and not have to answer to the mayor, the council, or the city manager. Is that possible? I don't know what that ordinance, I didn't get a copy of the ordinance, so I don't know what you're doing with the city clerk in that ordinance, so you have to tell me.
And we will be discussing that, Peggy. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. It's great to see you.
That's my opinion.
Great to see you. Unfortunately, you don't get the last word, because there are some other folks who would like to speak to this, Peggy. Peggy asked me before the meeting, she'd like to have last words, so, but that's the order that it came up in. Thank you. The next one is Mark Scott. Is Mark here? Yes.
Good evening. I hope you people are all correct, because a wise man once told me, the only thing I know is what I read in the papers. So what I'm going off of is, first of all, two weeks ago was the first time I have ever came here and addressed this council. Number of times I've called the mayor on the phone about issues, he told me to come to the council while I was working nights, I couldn't get here. So this issue came up, very important to me. At that point in time, I tried to express the fact that there is a specific reason and purpose that the city clerk is an elected position, and it's not a position that should, first of all, be 10 hours a week. At that point in time, there was, there was a vote taken. Only three of the council members seemed to know and understand the purpose of that position, so it didn't, it didn't go through, didn't go well. But there are other things that need to, need to be looked at, and that is, we look at the, the position of the, of the clerk and what they actually do. They control a lot of things that normally can or can't be done without a seal. So that cannot be handled to just everybody and anybody. I'm also opposed to what I read about giving the city manager his own seal. That's taking it away. The city clerk should be the one that's elected and the only one with the seal. There are, we have other issues that are more important than who's going to hold the seal and stamp the papers. If for whatever reason, somebody comes in here the last day and has to have it right away, and she's not here, that's not her fault. He had how much time to get in here and get that thing stamped? The, you know, we're looking at people that are having all kinds of housing authorities issues. The question I have is, I raised my hand earlier, nobody recognized it, but don't these people have permits to operate rental property? Don't you need a permit, or you just put up a building and say for rent? Nobody knows the answer?
I thought they did.
Because of the fact that if I was any member of this city, and I had a housing authority like that, the first thing I'd do is I'd pull the permit, get them out of there, and they got two choices. They could either correct the situation, or the building can go down. But anyways, getting back to the clerk position.
You're right at three minutes, Mark.
Okay. I'm back here to stress the fact that the clerk position should be an elected position. The council or the, the people have passed a referendum two, three, four times. Last time, the comment was made that 12 disciples could not speak for the multitude. Maybe what we need to do is get the multitude in here. Maybe what we need to do is get the multitude in here. You go around and get all those people with the flags on their front porch, tell them how it's being acted. Last time, there was a guy mentioned a hammer and sickle on the wall. So, evidently, somewhere along the line, we've lost the American way here, and we need to get it back ASAP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bessie Cronopolis. Former mayor, Bessie Cronopolis.
Mr. Mayor, I tried to do this so that I could speak for somebody else, too. It's on both of these items, K-1 and 2. I'm trying to save you time, so I'm condensing it. Kay Shelton asked me to read her, and then I'll read mine, if that's okay?
Sure.
This is from Kay Shelton, who used to live in the 3rd ward, by the way, and very active in the community and so on. Smart lady. She says, "The newly proposed ordinance is to keep the city clerk elected, yet elected, rob the position completely of its power and the city seal, is nothing but yet another attempt by the city administration to circumvent two referendums and grab power to do what they want, when they want, behind closed doors. The public is not fooled by what this really is about, using the seal without any kind of scrutiny from the city clerk reports to the public. Additionally, in the time that there were seven clerk, city clerks, there were six different city managers, interim city managers, and the pay for those managers was rather hefty compared to the city clerks. We, the public, know that the ridiculously low pay is to discourage anyone from running for city clerk office, so the city administrators can appoint who they want. Before the next election, restore the elected city clerk's position to full-time with appropriate full-time pay. Kay Shelton."
Thank you. She was well within her three minutes.
Well, I'll try to be. I might be a couple of seconds over. I tried to time it. Okay. Peggy, it's nice to see you, and I'm going to follow your lead. I know better than not to agree with Peggy. Mr. Mayor, City Council? A democracy functions best if the public is engaged in the process by staying informed, questioning, and voting. This engagement has become even more important for DeKalb citizens since there is an issue before the council that is testing the core of what democracy is all about, the city clerk matter. DeKalb operates under the council manager form of government, a mayor elected at large, seven aldermen elected to represent wards, a city clerk elected at large. The mayor and council set the policies. The manager, at council's direction, oversees the day-to-day activities of the city. The clerk keeps records, takes minutes, issues various licenses, and checks procedures. In 2006 and 2012, the citizens voted to maintain an elected office of the city clerk as it had been for years. Citizens clearly understood then as now the need for an independent clerk answerable directly to the people, and that is an important component of this form of government. An active, engaged, funded clerk's office had, in years past, a strong presence, as Peggy will attest to, in City Hall with the clerk overseeing all its functions of licensing, record-keeping, minutes, FOIA, involvement in the agenda, and sitting in on staff meetings. A strong presence that allowed that office to be respected as part of the day-to-day functions of City Hall. The last three managers have one thing in common, actively trying to undercut the city clerk's office by cutting back funding and intimidation tactics, which make it difficult for those who tried to fill that position, even those who had been duly elected with more votes than the members at the time, by the way. Yeah. Clerk Fizikas has been doing her job with a hope of someday bringing the city clerk's office back to where it once was. She has been courageous in protecting that office. She initiated the idea of setting up a committee to look into ethics policies of the city. She prepared and put forth a progress report of the clerk's office in hopes of having a public discussion council to improve the office. This desire to discuss the goal of resolving was not met with open arms. If anything, there were threats of public embarrassment. Next was the attempt to withhold the report from the council rather than to use it as the catalyst for public discussion of the clerk's office. Then, there was the questionable co- session, meeting after which the mayor asked the clerk to resign, another questionable action. The next move was to present questionable ordinances, which in effect were written to make the clerk's position appointed, in direct opposition to the wishes of the public in form of government. And tonight, as Alderman Morris pointed out, and tonight, we again are faced with ordinances up for second reading, which have suggested amending and additions apparently from the city manager, not exactly proper procedure. Thankfully, three members of council had the courage not to fall prey to the limited and skewed information and advice, legal advice, they were receiving about this matter. One instinctively knew that there was something wrong with the manner in which the closed session was conducted. Thank you, Carolyn. The council manager form of government is a good form, if it's properly followed. It's time that the council understands clearly that they are in charge, and it's time for us, the public, to understand that it is our duty to speak out in question so that our representatives have ample information about all topics and not just the skewed version backed by poor legal advice they seem to have been giving lately. I respectfully thank you for listening. Bessie Cronopolis.
Thank you, Bessie. Steve Kapitan.
Pardon me, I have still recovering from a bit of a cold. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I question that even this amended ordinance is needed to resolve the dispute over the seal. That's an administrative process that could have been and should have been done and pursued beyond just an attempt at asking for a meeting, and then when the first request was made, it was refused, that you moved to change the structure of the ordinance. That is inappropriate and unprofessional. The turnover of the city clerk's office over the last seven years is due to the council making it a poorly paid, part-time position. Those conflicts stem from that, and that is what needs to be addressed. That is something that Clerk Fizikas raised in her progress report. But we are witnessing tonight the value of having a process of passing ordinances on first reading at one meeting, and then finally passing it at second reading at the next meeting. This gives the council and the public two weeks to consider the question before a final passage. It's true of all ordinances. This is especially true of an ordinance that attempts to change the structure of our city government, not to mention going against the will of the people as demonstrated in two referenda. The mayor and the council members, and the four council members who voted for short-circuiting this process, should thank the three council members who respected the process and the public. If you had gotten away in rushing this ordinance through two weeks ago, you would be facing the embarrassment of reversing yourself tonight, rather than passing amendments to an ordinance. I have a couple of questions, and then a final sentence. First of all, what process was used to change the ordinance prior to the posting for this meeting? What was that process? Was there a meeting? Who was involved? That's the second question. Finally, the city attorney assures us that changes to an ordinance upon second reading are legal, but just because something is legal doesn't mean that it is right.
Thank you, Steve. John Anderson.
I thought for a minute there was two John Andersons in the room, but I guess I'm wrong. I don't know what these changes are that you made in this amendment, but to me, if you made a change, this would be the first reading, not the second. And one thing I can't understand, you know, all seven of you aldermen and the mayor were voted on by the people. You represent the people. You don't represent city staff. And you could have gone to Sycamore and found out just how many thousand people voted to keep the clerk's office elected, and you're just voting just the opposite way of what the people have already told you. I don't know. This young lady in the 1st ward here said the only sensible statement last week, and I do apologize for the swastika symbol and all. It isn't that bad, but it sounded like you were right back in World War II, and I'm apologizing for that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dwayne Brown.
Dwayne Brown, how many referendums do we need for the public to say they want an elected city clerk? Maybe a couple more, I don't know. We never had problems before when we had a full-time elected clerk. This all started in the past few years, that we've had this part-time city clerk, and it hasn't worked out. We used to have meetings here to go back to the full-time city clerk. I remember that, and actually, nothing was done, you know? We got sidetracked on this part-time city clerk. What we need is a full-time elected clerk with a salary, I said before, at $68,000. Eliminate the two deputies, eliminate the part-time clerk, have one strong, full-time clerk. It would still save us money. I believe ordinance 2019 or 54, I agree with the people, that should be a first reading. That was changed. That was... That should be first reading, even though the council voted it down. I think you should listen to Rick Amato, you know? I don't know. I went through all the, you know, the ILS state laws on this, and I couldn't determine if it was legal or not under the form of government we have, you know? But I know one thing. I know that the people want an elected clerk. We deserve that. And as Peggy Hoyt mentioned, our constitution says, "By the people, for the people." You know, when you change that, you're going to either a socialist government, a communist government, or dictatorship, and we're not that. We're a democracy. You can't change that. We need elected clerk, and we need to go back to a full-time one. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Two weeks ago, at the conclusion of our city council meeting, I stated that we, as a city council, are entrusted to do the right thing. At the time, I joined four aldermen who thought that the issues that we faced, and those issues were part and parcel of the fact that we've had so many appointed and elected city clerks over the last seven, eight, nine years. But those four aldermen, and I joined them, we thought the issues that we faced would be best served by approving an ordinance which would allow the appointment of a city clerk. And while this city could certainly join a host of other Illinois municipalities in making this change, it was clear that we had not adequately listened to the citizenry that who had voted by referendum that DeKalb's city clerk should be an elected position. And after meeting with DeKalb County State's Attorney Rick Amato, it was very clear that passing the ordinance would put us on thin ice. Our city manager, Bill Nicholas, was of like thinking, and publicly reversed his stance, and agreed that we should continue with the position being elected. In doing so, he has recommended that we defeat, on second reading, the ordinance that called for an appointed city clerk, and that will come before us tonight. During the last couple of weeks, both city clerk Lynn Fizikas and executive assistant Ruth Scott, who had been carrying on the duties of Clerk Fizikas's deputy, they felt harmed. They're hurt. They felt harmed by the onslaught of remarks, commentary, published comments. Neither deserved that treatment. It has not been an easy task to bring the kind of unity between our city manager's office and the office of city clerk, a task that I've continued to undertake since early June. We're still not there yet, with differing views on how we can serve the public with the administrative duties that need to be accomplished. I hope that over the coming weeks, we can indeed have an honest, thoughtful discussion among all parties to stamp a resolution to our differences. To do otherwise would be shirking the duties that we have pledged to carry out. We must do the right thing. With that, we have a motion on the floor, a second to that motion. I'd like to ask city manager Nicholas to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just explain what we understood would be evident to the general public and also to the people in the room tonight. So, after meeting with State's Attorney Rick Amato on Wednesday, the mayor and I had some conversation, and the agenda comes out by law no later than, I think, at 7:00 PM on Thursday. So, we had about a day to think how we would like to frame this up so the public could see what might be suggested in a way of a revision. And so, if you went to the website and you were looking for what was coming up, you would see a red-line version. So, what we tried to do is make as evident as you can without basically having an audio, which it wasn't possible, and that was to show how the ordinance that had been up for council review on first reading at the last meeting on the 12th, what was staying and what, by suggestion only, might be revised. And going from top to bottom, it's pretty evident that the wherethes that were directly touching on the work either of the city clerk or the deputy clerk were excised. The principal points that remain are these, that the clerk remains in elected office. The deputy clerk performs those duties that are listed in the, many of which have not changed, in the revision as before you, and they reflect the practice of the deputy city clerk for many years. Both the city clerk and a deputy clerk would each have a city seal. And for those that maybe don't know, I mean, there's... Some of the stories out there have served to defend a point, but not necessarily the facts. So, the facts are, according to our code, as it's written now and as it's been for many years, even in Peggy Hoyt's time, the deputy clerk was able to transact the business of the office of the clerk in his or her absence, which included- the office of the clerk in his or her absence, which included affixing the seal to public documents. That's not changed. It's not proposed to be changed here tonight, and it wasn't proposed to be changed before. But it was, it was proposed that we would affirm that, because it is stated in several parts of Section 3.14 of the City Code, which is the city clerk passages. Because that wasn't being done, we thought we should underline it and put a question or an exclamation point after it. Else, people coming in, and very seldom it's the people that are late to the mark, oftentimes it's people who have been waiting for a license to process through the city system and get to the council and to be approved. They're anxious to get their business going, or to keep their business going, and so they come and they ask for the sealed, signed license. And if you can't get that, and you're in that position, you will be very frustrated. And if you come back the next day and you still can't get it, you'll be even more frustrated. So the idea was, have a couple seals, or three actually, that we currently have under the city, not the city clerk, but under the city's guidance. And so we were looking to see that those could be shared so that work could be done. As I said earlier, the city manager currently designates the city employees who have the time and the expertise to perform functions as deputy clerk. That is in what's before you tonight in the amended version. The deputy clerk, as is currently the case, will not receive any extra compensation or special benefits for serving in the clerk's office. So they are doing a job now. They are going to make, they're going to stretch and make time to help with the clerk in the absence of the clerk or at the clerk's request. That's what that's about. And any employee who serves as deputy clerk would remain a, we call a Chapter III city employee, which is to say that they, they've been hired, they've been hired to a position that's been advertised, they're filling a position, they have the credentials to fill that position. And by our code, the only credentials you need to be the city clerk are that you're 21 years of age or older, resident of this community, and shall not have been convicted of a felony. Finally, the everyday duties of the clerk and a deputy clerk are enumerated in what's proposed to you tonight. And in our conversation with the State's Attorney, he said it was not the interest of his office how the council, which is sovereign in these matters, defines those duties. It was his interest, his very strong interest, that this position remain a elected position. And the mayor was there with me when we were having this conversation. And I listened, I heard that, and I've also heard what people said here, and that's why what's proposed tonight is before you. We recommend your approval of this particular ordinance. And when we get to the next ordinance, as the mayor said, I'm asking that you disapprove that ordinance, which was to change from an appointed, from elected to appointed.
Okay, we've had quite a few folks speak to this item. We appreciate that. We really do appreciate the input. I appreciate your comments, city manager Nicholas, and I hope that my statement had some clarity as it relates to what I felt we have done, not only the past two weeks, but the past several months. And for the media, I do have a copy of that statement, if you'd like it, following the meeting. Okay, with that...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I may offer as an amendment to the first red ordinance...
Sure.
...the proposal by Mr. Nicholas with just a minor change in, under the deputy city clerk, there's a section where it says, "From city personnel and staff who are authorized by the city manager." We want to change that wording to designated, not authorized. That's to be consistent with something is in there earlier. Otherwise, as the amended, proposed amendment is presented, I'd like to offer that for approval as the amendment.
Would you tell me where that is?
Yes, sir. It's on the 14th page of the document you're looking at, under deputy city clerks, about the fifth line down.
So from the city personnel and staff who are...
Authorized, should instead say designated.
Who are, does everybody see that? Who are designated by the city manager, not authorized. Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we change one word in...
Well, actually, in the, in the, I'm offering as an amendment the whole proposal, but with that one change in the printed material.
Right, right. That's what we're, that's what we're voting on now, just changing that one word.
No, sir. We are, the, I'm changing that as part of my original amendment to, to replace the previously, previous document.
Which the red line...
All right. So Jerry, well, all we're talking about is I make an amendment to the original proposal. As printed, I want to change one word in the offered amendment, and that is just designated. So that's all part of my original amendment, that we use, that as part of that proposal, we change that word to designated. So the whole proposal is the amendment with one word changed, so.
Okay, thank you. So we should first vote on the amendment, and then we will vote...
Well, we should have some discussion on the amendment before we go and vote on it.
Precisely. I've asked for that. Is there any further discussion on that amendment that Alderman Fanouken...
Yes, so I'm going to ask the city manager Nicholas to offer some clarification on paragraph F, which is also on that page immediately above that, about the office hours of the city clerk.
Right. It says that the city clerk shall keep the office. It's not specific to the hours, and...
I mean, it's, I think, Bill, with you and I discussed the other day, that we wanted to make sure that it's understood that the city clerk is not expected to be in the building all the hours that the building is open, but between the city clerk and the deputy, any of the business of the city clerk's office could be transacted.
That's correct. It assumes that there will be a partnership here between the city clerk and a deputy clerk, so the two together can keep that office open.
It does.
Could our legal counsel speak to whether it could be interpreted otherwise? Could that possibly be interpreted to mean that the city clerk, who is in that elected role, ought to be here all the time?
I yield to the counsel, we can make it more specific. This is, this is language that was not changed, as you can see, it was not underlined, so it was not changed.
All right. I think along with this amendment, it's just good to keep in mind that when, when Bill spoke to it, he noted that, quote, "We had about a day to throw this together." And I think we had, you know, at least one person mentioned in their comments that they were curious about what the process was to get to this, to this ordinance. And Bill spoke to that. And I think that...
Bill?
Bill Nicholas, I apologize. Bill Nicholas spoke to that. And I think that information would underscore the importance of looking at this more closely, more deliberately, and intentionally writing this ordinance with best practices of government in mind, rather than something that is admittedly rushed.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I, and we talked about this last Thursday, and at that time, you agreed that this was a good compromise. This was not rushed by any means. We've been discussing this now for a long time, and we were drawing from words we've heard here and advice and guidance we've received from other legal authorities, as I've discussed here tonight. So what I was trying to do was to, was to reflect those comments and suggestions. That's what's here before you tonight. So if I thought it was not soup, I wouldn't have brought it forward.
I understand what you're saying, and I respect the work that you have done to put forward something that is respectable, but I think that there are just a number of problems with this. If we were listening to what we're hearing, it's abundantly evident that what we're hearing over and over again is the same thing, and it is not, let's better define the duties of this role. What we're hearing from the people is, this needs to be a full-time position. And I don't want to, we have people coming out that we've never seen before, okay? I understand that we frequently hear from the same people, and so perhaps you discount their input because you've heard it over and over again. I want us to note that we have every random person in the community out here speaking to this, underscoring the fact that this has been voted upon already, and yet, and so when the city manager and I spoke this past Thursday, I respected that we were adjusting this to the concept of redefining the duties as an appointed clerk, or I'm sorry, as an elected clerk, redefining those duties. That was a good compromise to move toward a new idea here, but there are just too many problems with this.
Alderman Verbic.
Has the State's Attorney reviewed this and approved it?
Well, it would never be for the State's Attorney to approve your ordinances. But the State's Attorney can, can weigh in, and has. And it wasn't his interest to, to say, "I agree with these words," every word, and so forth. He agreed that with my suggestion, it would be a good idea to remove a lot of the wherethes. He also agreed that the, and if he was here tonight, he would say this, I believe, that the, the duties and the assignment of duties, one to the other, deputy to, to city clerk and back, that's your prerogative. His principal interest, and he's made this very clear in a, in a letter that was made very public a couple of weeks ago, had to do with how the clerk is selected, and that's not changed in what's before you here tonight. I also might add that the city, according to state law, the city clerk's salary can't be adjusted during the current term. So we can make, for instance, the city clerk a full-time job, which it is, in effect, or not, but the remuneration won't change, as a number of people said here tonight. I don't know if that will solve the problem. So what, what you're addressing here tonight is, is the part-time city clerk and the possibility of duties assigned to a deputy clerk to be designated by the manager and appointed by the clerk.
So the State's Attorney has not objected to this?
Not objected, no.
Okay. I would like to ask the city clerk, the city clerk, have you objected to this latest proposal? Do you have any objections to this latest proposal?
Thank you for asking. I have major objections with this proposal.
Are you able to please help us with the details of those objections?
I think I have them pretty well memorized.
Please.
Well, with an elected clerk, there are some statutory powers that go with an elected clerk. Those statutory powers might go away if you have a referendum that changes to an appointed clerk. However, that has not happened. It is therefore, in just wholly, in my opinion, incumbent upon the council to get the local ordinances in line with those statutory powers. And those include how the city seal is designated. It includes how the deputy clerks are appointed, and it includes how those deputy clerks are supervised. Also, there's a lot of housekeeping that needs to be done with that ordinance in general. For example, the very first, the very first provision is that the clerk puts up a $1,000 bond. That bond is actually $5,000. I just paid it. So there, there are some major things to be changed, and this is something that the community has spoken about ever since the position was gutted by another council in 2012. And we've lived with it, and it hasn't worked well. As everybody's talked about, the over, basically the overturning of the language that should apply to an elected clerk actually applies, Section 3.14 actually applies very well to an appointed clerk, but not to an elected clerk. So if you're ready to go back to the drawing board, I am too.
Alderman Verbic.
So perhaps then, a workshop to sort through these things versus what, I have a feeling here amounts to peeing in the wind, that we should, we should sit down together and sort out what are those best practices up to and including, what is the FTE of the city clerk's office? Is it, is the work that's required, is equivalent to one full-time person, 1.5, two? I think we need to determine that, because a lot of what I heard and why I supported a point was this notion of accountability. So I've heard people, time and time again, say, "Well, we can elect a city clerk," and then they don't even have to show up. So I guess maybe it goes to the language that we have to clean up to make sure we have the requirements in place, the competencies that we expect, the process that we expect and can afford. And I, I think that this doesn't get us anywhere, but if we're all willing to work together in a workshop with the clerk, with the city manager, with legal, I think we can get there.
I would say that there is a lot of room for negotiation and compromise, but only on the non-statutory duties. The non-statutory duties can be done by any qualified administrative assistant. They don't have to be specially deputized either. But it's the statutory duties that are important to restore, and this now, I hope, is our opportunity to do that.
I think you echoed my last paragraph in my statement. "I hope that over the coming weeks, we can indeed have an honest, thoughtful discussion among all parties to stamp a resolution to our differences. To do otherwise would be shirking our duties." So Carolyn, I'm going to get back to you. And I don't know if that's proper for the mayor to ask an alderman in public, but I will. What do you want to do? Do you want to table this?
I think it would be...
You want to table it, and then...
Excellent to table.
And then I'm going to let you, who Bessie says gets it, you get it. I want you to be at the forefront of helping us to do what it is that you feel we need to do. Now, does that make sense? Or am I taking words out of your mouth?
No, thank you. I appreciate that opportunity, and I will be happy to try to lead us in the right direction.
Any further discussion? There has been... Peggy, I can't let you speak right now, but let us have our discussion, okay? And believe me, I'd love to hear you, but I just, I feel that at this point, we want this discussion.
It was a point of order.
Oh, okay, yes.
If you table discussion and don't make a specific date for that discussion, the subject is dead.
Alderman Morris gets it. So she would probably put a date on that, wouldn't you, Carolyn?
I'll put a date on it. Next meeting, how's that? Or let's, do we want to discuss when the best time for that is? Obviously, it's probably best to discuss... Obviously, it's probably best to discuss how long it would take us to assess this. Does anyone have any? Scott's waving.
Alderman McAdams.
We do have a motion on the floor that we need to vote on, but I think a good suggestion would be that we discuss it at the next city council meeting, before the meeting on the, I believe that's the 9th of September.
That would be agreeable to you?
Okay.
Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor. Yes?
There is a motion on the floor, the amendment that needs to be addressed first.
Would you repeat your, the motion to amend, please, so that we know what we're voting on?
All right, so.
Mayor, one point of order. There was a motion, I believe, made to table. I did not hear a second. Under Roberts' rules, a motion to table would essentially take precedence over everything else. If there's a, if there's a second to that.
I'll second all the memorances.
It's been moved and seconded that we table this ordinance for further consideration on the 9th, 10th, whatever that date is, of September. Do we need to vote on that? Roll call.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
So that ordinance, on second reading, is tabled for further discussion on the next meeting in September. Thank you. Okay, now we go to number two, Ordinance 2019-055, providing that the city clerk shall be appointed officer of the city of DeKalb. City manager is recommending that this item be defeated on second reading. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we defeat this ordinance in second reading. So if a vote yes means that we are defeating this motion.
Clarification, please. I believe if a vote no will defeat it. Because we've just, the motion's made to approve the ordinance, and we need to vote no for it to be defeated.
Okay, okay. So yes, a yes vote would be that we approve the ordinance, providing the city clerk shall be appointed other than elected. The no vote would mean that we favor the elected over the appointed.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate all the help, believe me. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
No.
Fagan.
No.
McAdams.
No.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
No.
Morris.
No.
Finuchin.
No.
Seven nay.
Thank you. So we will take up that first ordinance on September, the first meeting in September. Okay, now we get to ordinance's first reading, Item L on the agenda. Number one, Ordinance 2019-057, authorizing a zoning map amendment from the L1 Light Industrial District to the PDC Plan Development Commercial District and approving a plan development preliminary and final plan agreement, 204 North Fourth Street and 420 Oak Street, Agora Tower, Mooney Property, by PNG Development LLC. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Smith. And I believe we have one person who would like to speak to this, no, two people would like to speak to this. The first one is Steve Capitan. And then Jeff Lewis on deck.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to reiterate my opposition to including the purchase price of the property in calculating the percentage of city subsidy. As a matter of policy, I would continue to advocate that that's appropriate for city subsidy considerations, including this proposal. But substantively on this ordinance, I wanted to express my concern about the parking on Locust. I just wanted to establish confirmation, get confirmation that this will be public parking, and then also suggest that consideration should be given for short-term parking for access to the businesses on the first level. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will likewise be brief. You've got extensive documentation in your packet. I read before coming tonight that Naperville just set a record for the longest city council meeting ever getting done, somewhere around 2:30 in the morning, and we're nowhere near that.
I don't think we're going to go there either.
I'm really happy with that. You know, the plan is going to be very much like what you've already seen. John Pappas, the primary developer, is here. Dr. Glasgow, one of his key partners, is here. They've done a great job with the Cornerstone project, a great job with the Plaza de Kalb project. It's similar in terms of having higher-end apartments, executive suites, top-end commercial and office-type space on the ground level. And I won't bore you with all of the same details. You can read as well as I can. We wanted to make ourselves very available to the council to answer any additional questions that may come up and address any concerns that there may be. But with that, I'll thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Lewis said, this is a project that has been under consideration now for a number of months. It's been through two planning commission reviews. I'm just going to very briefly summarize the essentials that are before you tonight. I know you've had a chance to look at the documents in the background. Any specific questions you may have, I'll try to answer, and if not, I'll defer to Dan Olson, who's been involved in particularly the planning and zoning part of it. So the council at this point, when you're getting a large development, you're looking at two things. And one is, of course, the zoning petition and the plan applications. And the other is a development agreement. And a development agreement builds on earlier conversation that the council had when you approved the preliminary development agreement. So there's a final development agreement here. And I think it was mentioned earlier, we're talking about a very large project, 113,000 square feet. It's mixed-use with commercial on the first level, four stories altogether. The subject site is about three acres. Do you know where it's located? I won't draw your attention to that. It's the former Mooney dealership, though, and that had been, has been vacant since 2012. So back in June, on June 10th, the council approved a resolution committing to a preliminary TIF agreement. That resolution had two parts, dedicated $2,075,000 from TIF I funds for a variety of purposes, including structural and architectural design, engineering and surveying, environmental remediation, demolition, 40 removal, and land acquisition, and some other items as well. That resolution that you approved back in June also identified a commitment of an additional $462,500 when this L-shaped facility was 50% completed, and then a final $462,500 when final occupancy was granted from the city. That's an additional $925,000 on top of the $2,075,000 for a total of $3 million in assistance. And that comes to about 21.6% of the project cost, if anybody's keeping track. A key consideration in your support then, and I assume in your consideration tonight, is a projected return on your investment. And that's always been of interest, and most especially in recent years, where our TIF fund and TIF assistance is concerned. So what, how do we calculate that? Well, in 2018, the EAV, the equalized assessed valuation of the land and the buildings on that vacant property was just under $300,000. And based on that EAV, a total of $35,563 in property taxes were generated for all the taxing bodies, not the city, but all local taxing bodies. All of the proposed $13,875,000 in project costs will not fall under the tax, under the tax rules. There are soft costs involved in a development of this size that aren't going to be included in that assessed valuation by the township processor. Same with some other environmental remediation, public infrastructure, so forth. But conservatively figuring that the, what would fall is about $10,140,000. And at one-third of the market value for that is $3,380,000. The projected EAV will conservatively generate a total property tax of about $400,000 upon full assessment. So $400,000 versus $35,563. Big change once the building is fully assessed and online. And then that lasts into anybody's foreseeable future. That will easily offset the proposed, we are calling it a forgivable loan, that's our language. There's a mortgage involved, which is sort of our protection that if for some reason the project isn't done or doesn't pay back in that period of 20 years of what we expect, then the balance is due, basically. The concept plan was really vigorously gone over by the planning commission back in May. Based on that feedback, a whole new project elevation and floor plan resulted. We're very pleased with the flexibility of the development firm. The proposed building will have 47 one-bedroom units and 47 two-bedroom units, and with approximately 12,000 square feet on the ground level for commercial space. A lot of other things that you know from your background, high-end finishes, as Mr. Lewis said, and fitness center, business center, meeting room, theater room, hospitality room, so on and so forth. The comprehensive plan has identified this for other purposes, light industrial. There are some changes that are part of what's before you tonight. As you read through this, you can see that we're looking to make this a plan development. The parking is addressed in that. It meets the, what we consider our requirements for parking after looking carefully at actual and projected parking needs of the building as a whole. Environmental reports, we know that there are issues here that have to be addressed, and those were presented to the planning commission. The recommendation that came from the planning commission to you back on August 7th was to approve, and that vote was four to zero. At the staff level, we recommend your approval of the planning commission recommendation.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded on this first reading of this ordinance. Any further discussion? Alderman Verbic.
We've had properties develop over the years, you know, some are just 20 years old and 30 years old. And I think we heard clearly from a number of folks in here earlier this evening a lot of the challenges that they are having. With the public investment going into this property, what are some protections? What is some language that could be included for the life of this project so that we don't end up in the situation we're in tonight? An ongoing situation with particular property owners that choose not to do the right thing. They don't step up. So Mr. Pappas and his partners likely won't own this forever. So what is specific language we can put in here? Because I'm very hesitant to support this kind of project where we're having property owners really just take advantage of not only the city but residents left and right. Not saying that you would ever do that, but what does the future lie for this property in the city of DeKalb?
The one thing, and we heard a lot of very concerned and passionate testimony earlier. The one thing that you can't preclude, you can't enact a law against is the kind of insidious indifference that a particular rental property group has brought into our community. And the mayor said it well, that really but for that group and its business model, which is basically to extract and not, and to put in the most minimal property maintenance measures and so forth, and basically to make us sue, make us take them to court, and then find some way to enforce the judgments after the court has ruled. Because the court then doesn't enforce its own judgments. We have to find a way to do that. Sometimes that means another court level or another court battle. And it means doing the things that we can do under law. So in a society of laws, that's the best we can do it. The law doesn't anticipate the kind of, the kind of heavy-handed thing that may enter our minds but cannot be done. So in this case, as in the case of, we heard earlier this evening, Hunter, you can't legislate your way to a easy solution. You can't enforce your way to an easy solution. And I can't change that, Mr. Pappas can't change that. What we do know is for this agreement, what this particular ownership group brings to the table. They have a track record that doesn't, it's 180 degrees removed from what we heard earlier. And the agreement goes for 20 years here. They will pay off that loan, that forgivable loan, well in advance of the 20 years. They have shown that that is the case in the past. And so we can't say we're not going to develop because we're afraid that we're going to have people without scruples and without any kind of business ethic operate in our community. We just can't legislate against that. I know of no way, I don't know if the city attorney knows of a way, we've gone over this. We have good faith in what's before you tonight. We are just so very grateful that after seven years, and even as last year's, the Mooney property was undercapitalized and underproducing, we're so happy that a person, a group, has, a number of people have been willing to step up and take the risk and invest as much as they are proposing to do. I think they might say, "What are we going to do to make sure that their investment is protected?" But I don't think we have to worry about what they're going to do to protect our interest.
I couldn't agree with you more there, City Manager Nicholas. And Mike, I would just use a very simple analogy. If I build a house today, what guarantee can I give you that someone may buy that house and have a house of ill repute or a house of something that is not very sundry, you know, in this environment? And, you know, I mean, here are folks who have a track record. When we look at this proposal, it was thoroughly vetted by our planning and zoning commission. I think they voted unanimously for its approval. So I've gotten to know you quite well over the last few years, and I know your concern. I share many of the same concerns you have. I don't know if I can look at an ordinance- I don't know if I can look at a ordinance that we have before us and agree with your stance tonight. So respectfully, I respectfully disagree, so.
And I understand, Mayor, but we're not giving you millions of dollars to build your house, so there's a difference.
Have you seen my house plan? No, 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 no. No, I understand.
It's apple and orange.
I understand.
Appreciate your opinion.
I understand. Alderman Favor.
So I, if I did my calculation correctly on my calculator here, the return on investment actually comes at, actually 6.7 years if we use, if your EAV assessment is conservative, as I hope it was. So this project will pay it, pay back those lending the money. It'll pay back $3 million in 6.7 years. In 10 years, at a 3.5% interest rate, which is inflation rate, we're at over $4.5, $4.7 million. So we're not even to the 20-year that we've given in the agreement. But this is the kind of project that I love to see. We're moving in the direction that the council, when I came on, their vision was to lend money, decreasing the value that the city would give in hopes that other projects would come into DeKalb and would want to, you know, those that took the risk the first time through would get the most money, higher percentage. But I think this is a great project. Again, it's going to be a great addition to DeKalb, and I'm glad to have it in our community. Thank you.
Alderman Smith.
I'm going to agree with both aldermen. Alderman Verbic, I agree with you, but I think we have a group of people over here tonight that are probably going to change the way we do business in the city, that I think will see projects like this keep going. You know, I sat through the planning commission, they were nothing but praise about the project for what Mr. Pappas had presented. So I have to vote in favor of this one. And I really do think, I have faith in our citizens now that everything has taken place in the city, that we're going to see some changes.
Alderman Morris.
And I think along those lines, you know, we took some steps at the last meeting to work toward moving in the right direction with that, and I think, you know, we'll try to invest some more time in that and see if we can't come up with something a little more solid that'll cover it all.
Yeah, we've, I mean, we've seen what Cornerstone, we've seen what Plaza De Kalb, we've seen that they acted almost as a catalyst for further improvement in our downtown with other merchants. And so this here could be a huge game changer, I would think. Okay, any further comments?
One more.
Yes, Alderman Smith.
I had a discussion with Mr. Pappas about potentially some of the bigger timbers. I know people have asked, you know, what do you do with the old lumber, I wish my grandfather was alive. So Mr. Pappas and I thought we may be able to set some of that aside for some people that like to recycle that large, those large timbers that I know exist in that building. I know who else has been in that building. But I don't know if that would curtail any of this project, or if that's something Dan may have to speak to if we can add in. But John and I did have a brief conversation about that. Basically recycled some of it to people that may want. But I don't want to impede the project, because I know removing the environmental is going to be quite a big task in that building. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan. McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Six I, one nay, one absent.
Right. And Alderman Fagan abstained himself, or recused himself from that vote because of his relationship, business relationship with the developer.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive second reading and approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we waive second reading and approve this. City manager Nicholas.
I'd like to bring this back for second reading. Usually you hear me say something differently. But Mr. Pappas was away out of the country, visiting family, and some things that we'd like to do to just polish and tweak that.
I'll withdraw my motion, then.
Yeah. We'd like to bring it back to you, making sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you. That motion has been withdrawn, and that second has been withdrawn? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes on second reading, and it'll come back for second reading at our next meeting. That concludes most of the items on the agenda. I would like to now give our aldermen the opportunity to make any reports they would like. And I'll start with Alderman Morris.
I just want to thank all the people that came out tonight, especially to speak to the Hunter prop, the issues going on with different landlords in our community. I would love to say that those were unique experiences, but those experiences I have heard over and over again from a wide number of people. The one woman talking about getting a new apartment that had the door kicked in and garbage inside it, I have heard that from multiple tenants. That was not a unique story. However horrific it was, it was not unique. So I just want to thank them all for coming out. That's really important, and hopefully we can, as, you know, David Rathke mentioned, come together and make some significant forward progress on this.
Amen. Alderman Finukin.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, I'm very glad that we are moving towards reaching a compromise on the city clerk and the, how things are happening there, and I'm glad that we've agreed to remain in elected position. Also, I want to comment, this was a past week, and was a great weekend for DeKalb, a very successful Corn Fest, and the students returning to NIU, along with the DeKalb schools opening up, and both this Friday night is the Barb's football opener, and Saturday, of course, are the Huskies versus the Red Birds of Illinois State.
Right. Alderman Smith.
Really won't see any more than great time at Corn Fest. That's really about it.
Alderman Fagan.
No report.
Alderman McAdams.
No report.
Alderman Verbic.
No report.
And Alderman Favor.
I will echo second ward Alderman's comments about Corn Fest. I think this was probably the best year. I mean, the weather was just fantastic. And, you know, the change-up, putting the vendors down the center, I think that was fantastic. I don't know why that was never done years ago, but that was the best. You were able to visit all the shops in DeKalb, you know, walk along the shops there, as well as visit the tents, and those vendors set up in the middle. That was a fantastic format.
Thank you. You know, I wish we could bottle what we heard tonight, because this is democracy in action. And if this were a civics class, or I was speaking to a civics class, I'd say, attend this meeting, but not just one meeting. Attend a number of meetings. Attend your board and commission meetings. Read the media accounts of what is happening in your community. And try to believe that the people you elect, these people up here, truly care about what is happening in the City of DeKalb. We really do. And part and parcel of that is listening. We have listened, we have heard the public, we have made some honest discussion and action tonight, and I truly appreciate that. I really do. City Clerk Fizikas, any report?
I would just like to thank the public who had come out tonight to speak on the city clerk issue, as well as two weeks ago, as well as when this, when these conflicts first came out. I'm trying to do my best by the elected clerk position, because it is the elected clerk until it's not, and I could not have done this without the support, the questions, and the interest by the media, everything.
Thank you. City manager Nicholas.
No report.
We do have an executive session tonight. I'd like to read this in its entirety, and then I would ask for a motion. I'd like a motion to approve an executive session, or recess into executive session, for approval to hold an executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation, as provided for in 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C11. I'd make a motion, I'd entertain a motion, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we recess into executive session. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. We are now in recess. Thank you very much.